Please rise to the and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
On the Pledge of Allegiance, to the
Pride of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now I will call this regular school board meeting for Independent School District Number 544 to order. The first item of business is to establish our forum, and so I'll turn to the board. Kirby Anderson.
Here.
Natalie Knudsen. Melanie Poole. Present. Matthew Lemke.
Here.
Missy Hermes present, Stephen Vigesson.
Here.
We have a forum. Thank you. The next item of business is to entertain a motion to approve the agenda. Will someone make that motion? Thank you, Stephen, second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion in regard to approval of the agenda? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. The agenda is approved. Well, now we'll link to the board reports. Each of the board members is assigned by the board's additional sitting on the regular school board. We have additional board three. Our responsible board will begin with Kirby Anderson's board reports.
Okay, I am in the Finance Committee and the 544 Education Foundation. I have nothing to report from the Finance Committee, even though a little bit later we will have the Treasurer's Report. On the 544 Education Foundation, I am an ongoing member of that board and we meet monthly. We have not met since our last report that we had one month ago, but there has been a lot going on. We did complete a number of items in the last month or so associated with the 544 Education Foundation. It's a great, you'll hear some of the things that we do, and it's a great organization. We did serve just under 600 meals of Taco on a Bag on our Pride Night. We have retired staff reunion on Thursdays, September 30th at the YMCA, which went very well. We also had a distinguished alumni Hall of Fame event just this last weekend, October 8th to 9th, where we had Tom Insh and Jenny Westrup, Madeleine Hillsup into the Hall of Fame. Some of the things that happened last year, we did just have the annual meeting for the 544 Foundation. So just a quick recap, in the 2020-21 school year, we gave about $33,000, almost $34,000 of grants. A lot of those went to teachers for requests that they had for things that they needed that weren't budgeted or paid for by the school district. We also awarded $10,000 in scholarships to about seven different graduate seniors. Donations come in, we had 421 members, 36 of those are considered major members, we had 132 memorials. So we did have some cancellations because of COVID, some of the things that didn't happen, the retired staff did not happen last year. We missed on the golf tournament last year, the in-service lunch, which we did not do last year. And we didn't do the Hall of Fame or our Pride Night last year, which we did just this last month. We also had welcomed in a couple of new board members, and we do have an outgoing president, and that was Nick Mariani. And we have incoming president and Chelsea, are you here? Chelsea, I'm not sure if you want to stand up this way. This is your summer. Anyway, she's our incoming president, so thank you to her and to all other board members for their service. And unless some of the board members have any questions, I think that concludes my report.
Any questions for Kirby? All right, thank you, Kirby. Quite alphabetically, my board reports include the Special Education Cooperative, we met today, and the Director of the Special Education Cooperative indicated that there is specialized compliance and physical monitoring systems that are changing with the time and efforts being focused. The District, the Special Education Cooperative, which is its own district, has to submit to oversight committees of the state federal government to time allotments for each of the pair of staff and so that that can be accounted for, and that's a basis for some of our funding. She also gave indication, our auditors were here, completed their annual audit, and that went well. Many of the staff have been training and with COVID and all the additional responsibilities, there's a variety of training options available, some after school, but for those who have complicated situations that can, it is also reported and can be done at another time. And then one thing that's been a significant issue or burden for the Special Education Cooperative is COVID catch-up planning. So for each of the special ed students, there needs to be an offer to the parents to redo their individualized education program, or IEP, before the end of the year. If a parent accepts that, then the plan must be reviewed, and if the parent believes there is a need for COVID catch-up that has not been addressed yet, then the planning is into that as well. So that was the primary focus. We also did some agenda, or some personnel items on the agenda, and we are going to distribute performance evaluation for the Director to be involved staff. And then Region One, we have another school board out of Morehead that provides computer and database services for the west side of the state. It is its own school district, and it, for example, provides us with our student database synergy. They do the troubleshooting, programming updates, et cetera, et cetera. We met with that board last, at the end of last month, and reviewed the audit for there. And just did personnel stuff, just very routine. Activities Committee will be meeting soon. We're revamping the co-curricular schedule. Well, actually, the athletic director and some administration and some of the teaching or coaching staff are doing that, and we will come to our committee for review. And then lastly, not on my list, but often I report on negotiations, and we have begun negotiations with the certified staff. We've had several meetings. It's going nicely, we've been quite progressive, and we will be meeting again probably in the next month, date to be set. So to the board members, any questions on my board reports? All right, thank you. And we'll continue on with Missy Hermes.
Okay, the Policy Committee has not met since our last school board meeting, but Staff Development Committee has, and we met on October 4th, and that is a committee where the staff can decide on different trainings and so on. And so that, we talked about our budget for this year, which has been a carryover because of COVID, and what are some plans that we're going to make to provide training. Some of the top training needs that staff have talked about are mental health of students and staff, technology, and social emotional learning. And so most of the discussion was what would be the Staff Development Days, what would be happening? There's one in January and one in March, and it looks like we're going to have some of the administrators plan some of that training so that we can put into place those ISTI standards and also the project-based learning to help give educators that are planning those different projects and that changes to their curriculum. We'll be putting that into place.
Very well. Anything else for our board reports? Any questions for Missy? Thank you, Missy. Natalie Knudsen.
All right, Buildings and Grounds has not formally met, but we have a variety of projects in place right now. And we, at our last board meeting, went through an evaluation process in our work session that kind of looked at all of our facilities that we currently have, and kind of broke things down on what kind of repairs may need to be made, and just a really nice detailed report that we will be coming back as a board to discuss. And then the Wellness Committee had their first meeting of this school year. Lots of great things continuing to transpire with food service. There are, having some issues with getting some of the products that they have been wanting to serve, and so kind of thinking on the fly sometimes. And one of the questions from staff members at the meeting was figuring out a process to get some of the healthier items to the staff at the other school buildings, such as some of the take-and-go salons and some of those healthier options. And then as part of the strategic planning and the staff climate culture subgroup, the district has decided to start incorporating some of the Thrive Initiative. And so just to remind you, Thrive is health and wellbeing, happiness and purpose. So there's a variety of different components that that all entails, but in September, the staff went through some different activities related to social connections, and now this month, they're diving into values. And so the whole point is the staff is going to be practicing all of the values and components the first half of the school year, kind of learn how it feels to be going through the process, and then they'll be taking those components and teaching them back to the students the second half of the year. So just a good effort to keep the climate culture on a positive note and try to keep those kids just working through mental health, I guess you'd say.
Very well. Any questions for Natalie? Stephen Vigesson.
Good evening. My reports are busy tonight. The legislature, the legislature is not in session, I'm going to report there. The Meeting for a Committee, which is a committee that is the staff and boards, and it's there to work through particularly sticky issues, but also just the biggest thing to do is the calendar for the year. But we have not met or conferred quite some time. And regular review will be getting started next Tuesday, so I will report next month on that.
All right. Any questions for Stephen? And we'll have a board report from our superintendent. Jeff Drake.
Good evening. And thank you for everyone who are coming out for tonight's meeting. Before I get going, I just want to start out with a short personal anecdote. On my, before the meeting, I was out in the park lot, and on my way back into the school building, there was a young lady that was sitting on the sidewalk right next to the door, and she said, "Mr. Drake?" I said, "Yes." She said, "Good luck." And I will tell you, it's moments like that that make me honored to be serving this community and this profession, even on the hard days. It was mentioned earlier that the 544 Foundation and the school district had done a Hall of Fame on Saturday. I do want to extend my personal congratulations to Tom, Jenny, and Jason, three outstanding Otter alumni that have represented, continue to represent the school with great pride, talk about the great memories and influence the school had on their lives to date. We just finished up our homecoming activities, and my congratulations to Alex and Helena on being designated the Homecoming King and Queen. We really had a very positive week all last week culminating in the Homecoming parade, as well as an absolutely beautiful evening for the football game, homecoming dance, and the pet band playing. And I do want to extend a very special thank you to Minnesota Motors. They sponsored free admission to the game and also a hot dog supper. One of many, many instances of the tremendous support that we continue to have in our district for our children. We have a career prayer coming up on October 14th for the high school. We're very excited about that. I won't go through each of the grades, but each one has a specific focus, and appreciate all the work that is going on to organize that and to the businesses that will be coming to work on behalf of preparing our students for employment, both now and once they graduate. We had some facility issues with the big storm that rolled through on Saturday evening. My understanding is some flashing was torn loose from the roof of Adams. As the flashing was blown across the roof, it ripped a hole in the membrane. So my thanks to the folks up there, Doug Anderson and Shay, Dan Ross, Mike Downe, Owen Scott Colek. Doug in particular spent the entire night Saturday with about 40 buckets collecting water. We did have some get through, so we had some damage to some technology in the workroom down below the cafeteria at Adams. I want to spend some time this evening just kind of laying the background that brings many of you here tonight, and that's where we're at with the COVID-19 pandemic. I want to highlight some of the rationale in the recommendations that I've made to the district. I do need to tell you that I am a data-driven person, so I look at the numbers. I consult with the people that are available to us to get good advice. As you know, and apologetically say, I am not a medical expert. So the guidance that I seek comes from people that are medical experts. This came from the Star Tribune late last week. We can see that this thing has changed. The Delta variant is not the same as the virus we were dealing with last fall. You now see the increases in the younger people that are getting the infection, and then down at the bottom, you can see that nearly 4,500 students or school workers have tested positive for COVID-19 and were in their school buildings while infectious during the two-week span ending September 25th. So this isn't simply indicative of Fergus Falls, the virus is quite prevalent throughout Minnesota and our school systems. This is a look at county cases, and you can see the yellow is where we're at in a comparable point of time from a year ago. Remember that this schedule began kind of just around the Thanksgiving time into December. We went into distance learning, grade seven through 12, right around Thanksgiving. Then we continued with that model until about January 20th. But you can see again, we are well ahead on the trajectory from a year ago with this COVID-19 Delta variant. I find this data really interesting, and this is an age break now, so almost getting the Delta variant right now. If you look at this dark blue bar from a year ago, that represented students that were under 18. The comparable bar is this kind of dark yellow now, and you can see that so far with the Delta variant, the yellow bar exceeds the total number of cases across all age groups from a year ago. I'm going to take you back a year in history to October 8th, 2020. Students and staff, we had seven cases of COVID to date. As of this afternoon, when we added another 12 cases, we're up to 80. We're over 10 times the number of cases that we were a year ago. And keep in mind, at that time, we were in a hybrid schedule at the high school, and the 712. Do we have community spread within our school? The answer is undeniably yes. You can see already, these are not big schools, folks. We don't have that many staff and students in these buildings, and you can see what's already happening with the numbers. As you look at it, the data longitudinally from a year ago, we had 180 cases all year last year. After 25 days, we're at 80. What's the impact been? Frankly, we have struggled with our staffing. I want to say my sincere appreciation to all our staff members for their flexibility in taking on additional assignments at the drop of a hat, things they aren't necessarily accustomed to doing. Our administration, with the help of the staff, have had to patch things together to try to have somebody in the classrooms and keep the education going. In order to do that, some difficult decisions need to be made. We've had to pull people aside that are reading interventionists. So those students that need help reading, maybe there was some learning loss last year, or they're not at grade level. Typically, we would be doing intervention to support their learning. We have to pull those interventionists in order to cover the classrooms so those students are not receiving the support that they both need and deserve. We have a lack of subs. I do appreciate, a few of you have reached out and said, "Well, if you need subs, we're happy to help." We can cover, paraplegicians can be employed in the district fairly quickly. We do need a criminal history background check, but short-call subs is a longer process. There's no quick fix here. They are licensed through a state agency called HealthKeep. From the time they receive the short-call sub application, we can expect that it will take 30 to 45 days for that application to be processed. And even then, I can say I'm extremely grateful for everybody that has been a sub in this building, whether on the student support side or in the classroom. But it is not the same having a substitute teacher in charge of the instruction as it is having a regular classroom teacher in front of the kids. The mitigation strategies we have at our disposal aren't frankly a lot. This is an airborne transmitted illness. We have our ventilation increased to the maximum amounts that would make sense for us. We can apply social distancing, but we are, when we are at full capacity, there is no way that we can keep these students separated all day long. You are familiar with the behavior of children, they're very social, they're very active, they enjoy playing with their friends. All of those things make social distancing very, very challenging. We can do things like putting kids together in pods, but again, with the number of kids we have in our schools, they are going to have a lot of contact with one another. So masking. I'm not here to try to engage in any kind of debate about whether masking is effective or not. I rely on some agencies that I'll refer to in just a minute for that guidance. But as you can see, with the masking as a mitigation strategy, it's very simple and straightforward, at least. It's easy and quick to implement. On the cons side, it's become very highly controversial, which is what brings so many here this evening. The science behind it, or philosophy behind it is pretty simple, as indicated in the diagram. It's simply trying to reduce the amount of spray, et cetera, that contains the virus from passing from student to student. Masking is a widely accepted mitigation response by many of our healthcare organizations. We primarily take our guidance from Otter Tail County Public Health, from the Minnesota Department of Health, and from the CDC. But before the start of the school year, we also received a letter advocating for schools to implement universal masking requirements from the Minnesota Chapter of the American Academy of Pediatrics, the Minnesota Medical Association, the Minnesota Academy of Family Physicians. A year ago, our students were masked, and I can't remember, it seems like ages ago, quite frankly, but I think they were basically masked all 170 days. For 170 days, this district offered in-person K through six education. One of the very few, I believe, in the state of Minnesota. So I think as a strategy, as a mitigation attempt, it has some merit based on our history. Our current mask is for eight days. We appear to be reaching a peak in the transmission. I really just am looking for a period where we can mask up and see if we can slow this thing down. Let us look at the impact it's having a couple of weeks from now. I'm not promising that my recommendation would be to end it at that point. I would like to take a look at it in two-week increments. But for those of you that are concerned that this is just the start of a year-long commitment to universal masking, that is not our intent nor our philosophy. Let's just do what we can to slow this down, continue to look at the data, and make reasonable, well-thought-out decisions. I do it as a short-term strategy. No one would be happier to be free of a mask than I am. I don't like curare, but if it means that we can stay in-person learning, if it means that someone's mother or father is able to join them at Thanksgiving, I will put one on without question. Quarantine and isolation, another mitigation strategy. So this is when we prevent students from being in school. It can be done either at the individual level, by classroom, by building, or by district. We have done some quarantining so far this year, but as I said earlier, it's clear that this is spreading within the community. We don't see it within our school community. The contact tracing, because students are very active socially, is difficult. And as you look at the feedback that we received last year about the results of distance learning, we saw the negative impact that it had on our students' learning, the sharp increase in the number of failed classes, parents indicating concern for their child's mental health, parents expressing concern at how exhausting it was to come home from work, do all those things that need to be done to manage a household, and try to help your child of his or her homework. We're really trying to employ strategies that take the pressure off the community, allow people to continue maintaining their jobs, and allow us to continue having the kids come in for in-person learning, which we think is the healthiest option for them. So I don't have a lot of great options to consider. In 20 years in this business, this is the first set of issues over the last 18 months that has kept me awake at all hours of the night and not liking any of the options that I had to choose from. But here's the question that I ask myself, given the following two options, which one's better for our kids? Asking them to mask up and hope that it's a relatively short-term period? Or seeing us potentially slide into distance learning? And for me, that answer, for me, that answer is clear, but I would prefer the mask-up option. I'm going to go and respond to some of the questions that have come my way. There have been lots of rumors floating around. One is, did the district receive extra funding if it requires students to wear masks? We received some very helpful federal funding over the course of this pandemic. Much of it utilized to buy personal protective equipment for staff and students, to help with the learning loss, to support the students' learning with summer school and extra tutoring, et cetera. There's some money that can be used towards ventilation systems, but there is no quote-unquote bonus or anything like that for requiring masks. The mask use is a mitigation strategy, it has nothing to do with any finances. Does the district have a decision-making rubric that dictates a specific course of action? So some districts have adopted this. We talked about it, we did not, for a few reasons. One is, the metrics are kind of challenging. The MDH has its own set of case rate numbers. They don't match the same formula that the CDC uses, so they're not completely in alignment, and the periods don't align. We also have the issue of, do you look at county case rates? Do you look at local zip code rates? Or do you look at the transmission that's happening within your students and staff? And if all those three components aren't in alignment, which one are you giving the most weight and by how much? A rubric also takes away some flexibility from the district. Once you put that down, people would expect you to follow it. And there may be some other factors involved that would be important to take into consideration before you chose a particular mitigation strategy moving forward. And lastly, to be perfectly frank, most of the mitigation, I think all of the mitigation models that I've seen, the rubrics, at some point lead the district to a mask requirement. So we would be here having this discussion, frankly, whether there was a rubric in place or not. One is that the mask requirement includes 7th through 12th grade students. The main reason is that the older students at least have an opportunity to be vaccinated, the younger students did not. We did hear this with some frequency from parents that were concerned, starting the year, that the masking was the only protection that the young students had because they weren't eligible for vaccination. I do fully realize that not everyone is on board with that. I do fully realize that not everyone is on board with vaccination as well. We do strongly recommend that the older students continue to wear masks. Again, my priority, I want some students to continue to be able to attend school in person. This was an interesting one, and at the risk of injecting a little levity tonight, did the district not require masks for the older students because of the revenue brought in by sports? I'm simply saying we're not Alabama football. The revenue that we bring in through athletics doesn't come close to matching the cost of the activities. We do these things because they're healthy and good experiences for kids. Does the district get all of its money from the state upfront? So basically, the thought was that the district would say that we're not masking, load up all these students so that we could collect the state aid on them, and then do a bait and switch, and then require masks. So the state does periodic edits or audits of our numbers. We report our numbers, and then our revenue is based periodically on points during the school year based on our enrollment. And then there is a reconciliation that happens at the end of the year. So as our enrollment fluctuates during the course of the school year, our revenue will fluctuate based on our enrollment as well. Did the district always plan on getting here started and then making a move to require masks? No. We have been monitoring where our district's and communities' COVID numbers were since before the start of the school year. I would be not upfront with you if I said that what has happened has come as a surprise. Frankly, as you look at what was happening in the southern states that started three or four weeks earlier than we did and the impact COVID-19 was having on them, the placement we're at now, given that we did not have a wholesale move towards masking, even as it was strongly recommended, this really should not hit anyone as a surprise. I'm going to switch my comments a little bit more on a personal side. So there's the data, and the data is important. But the human side of this thing is also important. People have commented to me that COVID-19 doesn't result in fatalities among children. And granted, the data that I'm familiar with would say that largely that is true. But the students still are carriers, and so they affect our staff. Some of them would be in high-risk groups. They infect or can pass on the virus to people in your homes, some of whom are medically fragile. And so it's not just about the students that come through the door. It's about the impact that the continued spread of this disease has on our loved ones in the community. And we don't know the battles that someone in the next hospital over have to face. And it wouldn't be a terrible thing if our compassion extended to our neighbor and we did what we could to try to slow down the spread or stop the spread of this disease. I found this quote that I wanted to share, "Truth compassion means not only feeling another's pain, but also being moved to help relieve it." In my back-to-school letter back in August, I indicated that our ability as a community to address this pandemic would be handled as a Fergus Falls society in its entirety. Not just the medical community, not just the school system, not just the local businesses, but each of us doing our part to try to address the spread of this disease and its impact. I was reminded this morning that my first introduction as superintendent in this district, the welcome-to-school letter, I had this quote, "Every community should set the welfare of its children as its highest priority." Whether you like me, whether you agree with me, simply know that the decisions that I recommend are based on what I feel, on the data that I have, to be in the best practices of keeping your students safe, the staff safe, the students in in-person learning, where I believe it is the healthiest environment. For the past 18 months, the school districts continued to ask how can we help? We provided childcare. We delivered meals door-to-door. We provided extra tutoring, mobile hotspots. On a Sunday morning, we gathered with Ottertail County Public Health and other county emergency responders and the National Guard to assess whether Roosevelt could serve as a regional vaccination destination. We're currently providing tests for both students and staff. We tried to do our part and have been proud to try to do our part to help our community. After 25 days of watching COVID-19 that continued to rise in our school and community, it's become obvious that the helper is now needing to ask for help ourselves. We need the community's understanding and support. We need its cooperation. And if you are so inclined, its grace. That concludes my report. Unless there are any questions.
Any members of the board with questions for superintendent Drake? Thank you, superintendent. And there's slightly all water. We have a board report from Matt Lecky.
Yeah, I'll keep my reports from short here. Lake County Service Co-op, we met September 23rd. Right now, we're going through strategic planning. And so just for those that are cooperative, this is area schools and county and city governments that form a cooperative. And so we are part of that cooperative as a district. One of the things that they do is work with health insurance. And this is the time of year when they go for bidding. And so school districts and cities and counties are going on to get their renewals for insurance. And so we are going through that process right now through the cooperative. One of the things that we found out about, and I know Natalie talked about it, is about the food. And one of the things that we heard about is the cooperative partnered with Cashway, not Cashwise, Cashway, which is a distributor of food. And they had our contracts with area school districts, and they go all the way down to South Dakota. And anyway, they had to come to the decision that they will not be able to honor that distribution chain and will be ending that in November. And the main reason is because they cannot find drivers. And so they are no longer going to be able to do that. So there's going to be school districts, and we will probably be a part of that. So we're going to find other means to provide, make sure that we can provide food for our students. And so that is an ongoing thing. And so hopefully, they gave us 60 days, which is nice because they don't necessarily have to do that. But hopefully, we will be able to help our members be able to find different ways of transportation. And that's what I have reported for Lake County Service Co-op. The other board that I just monitor is the Minnesota High School League, and they met on Thursday, October 7th. And just one of the ones to highlight, and I just do a highlight of them. And one of the big highlights is the basketball shot clock that's been talked about for over 10 years. I've been over it 10 years. And so anyway, the National Federation of High School Rules Committee has approved the shot clock. And so they are now going to go on to the next action of seeking input and then acting on that. Hopefully, December 14th, we're maybe implementing the shot clock into boys' and girls' basketball. And so let's see where that goes. I know that's something that people have waited for, so we didn't get to sit and watch softball. But hopefully, we'll see what that happens, so. And that's got to be... The other thing is that with winter tournament planning, the boys' basketball tournament had to be moved all to the University of Minnesota because there was a scheduling conflict with the Target Center. And so that was one change that they got to make. And so with that, that's all I have.
All right. Any questions for Matt?
Hi, Matt. I'm going to ask a question I ask a lot. Was that Minnesota State High School League, did they have a virtual meeting where people from out of state could participate in the meeting?
They do not have a virtual meeting. They, you know, we have talked about that, and I know we brought it up because the Minnesota School Board Association above that is that they do in-person. And they have had opportunities where you could call in last year a little bit and so that you could go onto the meeting and listen to it. But they have not had it where you could actually do kind of Q and A or have a discussion or anything like that. So, no.
Thank you. All right. Anything else for Matt Lecky? We'll continue on with our general consent items. This is one motion to cover, consideration for several items. First of all, are the minutes for our September 27th board meeting are up for approval? And then we'll also have consideration for the bills and treasurer's report and approval there, so. Treasurer?
Okay, this is one of our exciting parts of the meeting where we're going to talk about the bills. We have, we run about $34, $35 million budget each year. So once a month, right after the bills have been paid, I as treasurer, and then we rotate around the rest of the board members. So Steve and I sat down with Blake Stulp, our business manager, and we reviewed 10 pages of bills that were paid in the last month. And then what we do is we go through and we look for anything that looks like it's a big number or pays that might be questionable, or just try and answer, he answers any questions that we might have. So this month, we reviewed the bills that were paid. And October is generally a pretty slow month. There's not a lot of big stuff going on. A lot of equipment and supplies haven't been purchased. We did make our first payment. It was just over $300,000 to Stride, which is K-12 management. Most of you may know that as IQ Academy. So that was one of the bigger numbers. We have the range all over the Matt Football Equipment. We had some scholarships that we paid to various colleges, which are pass-throughs from other entities, such as the 504 Foundation. We had $13,500 that we paid in subscription fees to Huddle, which helps us to broadcast our TV and do stats for various sports. Maybe some of you have utilized Huddle to keep up on our sports. We did put just about $11,000 into wrestling mats, some sort of ball pads in the wrestling room. So these are some of the highlights from our meeting last week. A couple more, we had $65,000 went to butt whalers. And the Ruffing Project that they just completed. Some curriculum loan. We did some curbing over Adams, $10,000. Ike Bailey, $75,000 as part of our audit fees. One of the bigger numbers is our early childhood family education program through Lake's country is just over $200,000. $35,000 to paint the Roosevelt Gym. And then about $30,000 went to the Community College, Minnesota State, for our P S E O post-secondary education program. So those are some of the things that we look for each month. We bought some of our home books. There's always a few things that we question, but we've never found anything analyzed. Blake is, he's not here today. He's a great business manager. He always answers our questions very thoroughly and very quickly. So any of the board members have any questions? Oh, and as far as the treasurer's report goes, on the fund balance section, our funds, most of our funds are pretty close to where they were one year ago. They also, I think, the food service is up a little bit, community gas up a little bit. Otherwise, we're pretty close to what we were last year. So with that, that concludes my report. Any questions from board members?
Continuing on the general consent items, we'll have several personnel maneuvers that will be described by Elaine Janki, our HR director.
Good evening, school board members. And so, warm welcome to our board members. Under support staff hires, we have Craig Salia, custodian at Kennedy Secondary School, and Kevin Knudsen, district mechanical custodian, role, I guess, at the district itself, not at a specific school. We have three new staff members at Cleveland School. That would be Holly Schmidt, student support aide, Liz Corney, nun hour supervisor, along with Stephanie Lundie. Under certified staff hires, contract changes, Jenny Carlson, Allison Requist, and Heather Miller. They are three IQ elementary teachers, and they have an increase in their contract for this school year due to student enrollment. Claire Stich, we're offering her a long-term substitute contract with IQ also in the area of social studies. And then Joel Hykes, transportation careers teacher, an overflow contract for effect of this school year. So I have a request of board approval on these items.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the general consent items?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion on any of the facets before? Very none. All in favor of approving? Say aye. Oppose? Say nay. All right. General consent items are approved. We don't have old business, and we only have one item in new business. I would seek a motion to approve the 2021, 2022 Assurance of Compliance with state and federal law prohibiting discrimination. This was a document we received in our packet assuring that we have had compliance with all the laws regarding discrimination. Would someone offer a motion to approve that document?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor of approving? Say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Say nay. And that is approved. We will have a special school board meeting on Wednesday, October 20th, at 15:00 a.m. Location to be determined if we have a great interest. Again, from the public, we'll convene the meeting in here. Otherwise, we'll have it in the auto community room as we normally do. A regular school board meeting will be on Monday, October 25th, 5:15. Again, probably the auto community room. We'll see if the interest continues. And then that concludes our meeting, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
And a second?
I'll thank you.
Any discussion on adjournment? All in favor of adjourned? Say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Say nay. All right. We are adjourned.